Order it is for the regular scheduled board meeting for of April. It is April nineteenth, twenty sixteen. It is six thirty. Determination if we have a quorum. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
Present.
Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Ms. Julie Solis.
Present.
Mr. Benito Sainz.
Present.
And Mr. Ruben Klein.
Present.
And myself, Danny Garcia is present as well. We do have a quorum, all members being present. Section two, the pledge of allegiance. Student that is going to lead us in this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. I just want to make a quick announcement. I know we have the next week, several exciting events coming up. I know starting today, we do have a couple of our high schools competing to for the playoffs. Our softball, Rio Girls and I think our Gator Boys. After the meeting, we'll try to speed it up so we can possibly attend some of those games. And a reminder, on Saturday, April twenty-third, we have our first annual five K run. Hopefully, we get to see a lot of our employees and students competing. I believe it's twenty-five dollars per person for adults and for students, it's free. I don't know, Mr. Sainz, if we were able to get a contest or the most participants per campus? Are we doing that or no?
I believe so. We have a most participant.
Okay.
Very good.
And just for your information, all the money that will be raised is for the Nostro Scholarship. And it will go back to the students as well. And also a reminder, on Monday, we do have our annual superintendent's golf tournament. As well, that money being raised is also for scholarships for our students as well. And hopefully, we get to see as many of our faculty and students out there are in both events. And let me move on. Approval of minutes for section three, for the board meeting of March thirty-first, twenty sixteen, and the regular, the public hearing and the regular board meeting for March thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Do we have a motion and approval of the minutes? We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. Section five, item one, recognition, Gruya Middle School girls and boys track teams. Ms. Ibañez.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Garcia, school board members, Mr. Trigo, superintendent of schools, colleagues, community members and parents. I am here representing the Gruya Middle School educational community, very proudly representing my educational community. But before I continue, I do need to ask my coaches to come up and join me because this is their recognition. Coach Yarida López, she is our head girls track coach. Coach Charlie Carrera, head boys track coach and his team. We have Ms. Janie Gomez, Ms. Jessica Sainz, Ms. Nelly Osuna with the females. And we have Mr. Ray Flores, Mr. Juan Garcia and Coach Greg Glara together with Charlie Carrera. This is truly their recognition, their honor. They are the ones that put in countless hours and they're very determined. They started the year with their slogan, "Defend the Tradition," big words. I was like, okay, we got to do it again. We got to do it again. And I must mention that Coach López and her team here have won the district title eight consecutive years in a row.
Wow.
And our boys, our seventh grade boys also came in as district champions once again for Gruya Middle School. The eighth grade boys, they would hurt because there were very few points that brought them in second place, but they're still champions to us, our eighth grade boys. So let's give them a big round of applause too. And before bringing the children up, I do need to mention that this was only made possible with your support and of course with the parent's support. So I do ask the parents to please rise and be recognized because you've entrusted your children to me and to these coaches. Thank you, parents, for entrusting your students to me and to our coaches here. They've done a phenomenal job with your students, so thank you for all your support. All of you were out there at most of the track meets, even followed us to the district track meet in Zapata. So thank you, parents. Because of you, this was made possible. Thank you once again for entrusting them to us. Now I'm going to ask the head coaches to come up and ask the children to come and be recognized because it's all about them, right? So go ahead, Coach Lopez, we'll start with the girls, ladies first. I'll go ahead and get started with the seventh grade girls. Angela Trevino. Claudette Canales. Shanaya Gonzalez. Odette Fernandez. Chloe Sarate. Stephanie Garcia. Annette Trevino. Ashley Menchaca. Daisy Hernandez. Naita Sainz. Giovanni Cantú. Demichel Osuna.
Okay. Want to take a picture with the seventh grade students?
Seventh grade.
Now, I'll go ahead with the eighth grade girls. Amy Gonzalez. Alexa Penya. Destiny Pérez. Michelle Royce. Delaney Galván. Esperanza Alonso. Briannica Cantú. Chelsea Castillo. Cassidy Divine. Marlene Gutierrez. Briannica Penya. And Stephanie Reséndez.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with the seventh grade district champ boys. First up, Luis Villarreal. Jesús Rodríguez. Pedro Nedelski. Isaac Bermea. Margarito Alanís. Vidal López. Marcos Scott. José Trujillo. And Albert Montalvo.
So again, thank you, Mr. Trigo and school board. Thank you and thank you, everyone, for coming out to support and recognize our seventh grade boys, the district champs. Our eighth graders opted not to show up. They wanted, they missed the, they wanted to leave the distinction to the district champs. So thank you again and again, our seventh and eighth grade girls for district champs as well. Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Ibañez, on behalf of the school board, I'd like to again congratulate each and every one of the students who participated. You've brought a lot of distinction and honor to our community in La Gruya and the school district as well for the achievements that you all have been able to achieve and then for the length, the number of years that you've done. And so again, congratulations, parents that are here. Muchísimas gracias por prestaros sus hijos y hijas para participar en esta clase de competición. Es algo que nos trae bastante distinción y algo mucho honor a la comunidad de La Gruya. Digo La Gruya, pero es también García Vil, La Casita, La Victoria, La Gruya area. So muchísimas gracias a todos los papás y mamás que están aquí presentes. Les damos las gracias por los chamacos que tienen. Nos ayudan bastante y participan muy bien. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations and to the students and parents and coaches that are present. Like I said before, everyone's welcome to stay here to observe or watch our school board meeting. But we do understand if you all have to leave. I know we know that you all have homework or stuff to do. But we will continue with the school board meeting. Yes, and there are games, yes. Item two, consider and take possible action on the travel request from parental involvement department, General Ricardo Sánchez Elementary, Gruya Middle School, Ringo Middle School, Gruya High School, Rio High School and Early College High School.
Hi. Question one on something, okay? Oh, Mr. Trigo, Mr. Restri, you going to present first?
Yeah. Yes. If you have a question, Mr. Sainz or Ms. Solis? I guess I forgot to mention also on Friday, our Rattler baseball team will be playing here against Edinburgh Bella. And I believe for that game, our local little leagues have been invited and there will be free of charge or free admission for everyone that attends the game.
We have to put that on the website, Becky, wherever you may be.
Becky. There she is.
I think, Mr. Sainz had a question on item two. Go ahead, sir.
For, if the sponsors of these trips that are being requested are here, please listen to this carefully. One of the things that I think is essential in the request, the travel for, request for travel is that we have the names of the students who are going to travel, the names of the sponsors who are going to travel with the students, the budget to cover the trip and an itinerary of the trip. To me, those are the four essentials that I always look for because as a parent, for instance, I would want to know my kid when they go, when they have to be in school, what time they're leaving, what time they're getting over there, what are they going to do over there, what time are they leaving from over there and what time they're getting here? That's an itinerary. And I know every single one that asks for a trip has to do, prepare one. And please include it in your request for travel. And in today's request here, there's about three or four of those that are missing either the itinerary or something. And I just want to make sure that please don't forget to include the four items, the names of the students, the names of the sponsors, the budget and the itinerary of the trip. And one other caveat or one other little thing, if, if the trip involves, involves students of both boys and girls, then we have to have male and female adults going in the trip. That's a requirement. And so please always, always, always check that. That's one thing that I look for very closely because it's very important that we have supervision, appropriate supervision for the students. Quite often, I know the planning is done early on and so by the time the trip comes, there are some changes. And I, we take note of that very closely. For instance, there's a request for a trip for eighty-six students, but there are eighty-seven names of students on the list. Maybe a very small item or a very minor item, but it can have consequences if we don't look at that very closely. So please, please take care of that.
We will make a special effort. We will call the campuses again. We'll talk to the principal secretary and we will reiterate that those four items are mandatory. We were working on those, Ms. Sainz, but for some reason, we have glitch here of communication, basically. But we will double up actually tomorrow and then make sure that on the next board meeting, we will be hundred percent. We should be. Those four or five items are pretty standard operating procedure. And it's something that, it's a communication problem. But we'll double up, we'll talk to the account, the boys here and they're ready for that.
Do we have a motion, item two? We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sainz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action, a request from Stark County Attorney's Office for use of school facilities, multipurpose center, main hall for the child awareness vigil.
Mr. Board President, if I may just make a, just a little addendum there on item two, there was several requests here, one from Rio High and also one from the, I believe the, two from Rio High for this approval, so also they're not on here. So I just want to, you know, make notice of that so that we know that they're on the list and you all are aware of that. I gave a copy to Mr. Sainz earlier today and we went over the specifics on it and the trip, just, just so they can be, you know, part of the.
And let me say, both of those are special ed trips to here in Regan City. One to participate in the fun day that they're going to have, another one to go to the pizza, Peter Piper Pizza. So they're both local. Well, they were not included. I think it was okay for us to approve.
Do I need to ask for another motion?
I would do another motion too.
Okay, do we have a motion to include the addendum for item two? Do we have a motion by Mr. Sainz? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And before you go on, one more item, Mr. Trigo, I mean, Mr. Restri, on the student that advanced for competition?
We, we have a group of students that are moving up to Alt Area. I believe we have Coach Gonzalez, the track and George and Abel. And then on the, on the girl's side, we have Sita Jiménez also going to Alt Area. Those also will be traveling. That's an automatic though. We usually fund that.
Item, item three, consider and take possible action, a request from Stark County Attorney's Office for use of school facilities, multipurpose center, main hall for the child awareness vigil.
Some move.
We have a motion by Mr. Sainz. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action, a request from the Texas Department of State Health Services for use of school facilities, multipurpose center, main hall for the regional planning session for business process redesign.
They're just basically requesting sort of the use of multipurpose.
We have a motion, item four?
Some move.
We have a motion by Mr. Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on request from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension for use of school facilities, multipurpose center, main hall for cancer awareness program on May ninth, twenty sixteen.
This is a, just a request to use again the MPC and this is a, they do it yearly and this is pretty big. It's a community effort here, so we recommend approval.
Do we have a motion, item five?
Aye, some move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action, a request from the Star Youth Soccer League for use of school facilities, middle, Ringo Middle School field.
Yeah, this is just a renewal. They did it last year. They want to request it again this year. They'll be using the old high school on thirty-one sixty-seven by the west side of town. And they want to use the fields in the back. Actually, they're around working out, practicing, but we wanted to go through, make it formal so they can get out there and use the facility, fields up there. We request approval also.
We have a motion, item six?
Aye, some move, Chairman, with, just, go ahead.
Oh, we have a motion by Mr. Sainz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Again, please remind whoever requests use of facilities to do it in a timely manner. This one says April, they already started using it and it's okay because I know we're going to say yes, but if they could just be reminded to do it earlier so that we can get it approved before the effect.
They had been working out over here, Mr. Sainz said, on the parade field and on their own. I told them they couldn't go up there. They, he called me about five times, they said, we're going to have the meeting soon, so, but they were not up there. On this case, they were just waiting for an okay. And I said, it'll be Tuesday, by Tuesday night, I'll call you, you guys can go. And they're going to actually check in with the A.D. and Ray Ramírez and, you know, they're just ready to run. You know that soccer is big. You know what the Valley's doing on soccer, so they just eager to get with it and, you know.
Ms. Restri, I will do, I did want to thank you though for putting the certificate of liability insurance that to me just always makes me feel that much better knowing that all the kids out there protected.
It's an issue, it's an issue and we tried to explain that to the coach or to the sponsor. It's difficult to tell them no and then to provide this and that, but kids will be kids. They'll go out there, they'll still run, fall, break, something and it's a problem. And it's just something that we've got to be careful with and make sure they provide us so that we can be well-prepared, well-prepared.
I agree. Thank you for that.
Item seven, consider and take possible action, a request from business owner to have a business license as an alcoholic beverage retailer within a thousand feet from a public school campus.
On this one, Mr. President, I just need to mention that this is an existing business. It's been there since actually two thousand and three. This business was there, the J and O School was there before that. J and O's been around since ninety-nine. These people were approved by the previous board to acquire the permit. All they're asking is if they can renew it and simply because, let me make this clear, they had a death in the family. There's two sisters that owned the business. One of the spouses had passed away and they didn't want to be part of the permit. So one of the sisters would stay with the same business, same name, same everything. And they just want to change the permit. So based on that it was approved previously thirteen years ago, they're asking just, we just want to renew and continue to do what we do. We haven't had any problems, have been no incidents, no, no occurrences. They got a good record, so we're bringing it up and we're recommending.
Motion, item seven?
Aye, some move to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantú. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on attorney employment contract with Marjil Sánchez Jr.
Going back on Mr. Sánchez, Mr. Sánchez been working with the district or on particular case here since back in October. Mr. Sánchez has not received any funding other than the retainer fee, which is five thousand dollars. And basically what we want to do is finish, see if we can put this to rest sooner or later, sooner than later. And he's very close. I think they're asking for a summary judgment on it and that's where they're at in the status here. status here.
Do we have a motion, item eight?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on engagement agreement between RGCC ISD and the Mendez and Robles Group LOC.
Ms. Robles, Mendez is here with us today, she's here to my right. I want to thank Ms. Mendez for helping us out. She's been on board for about three weeks. She had worked with the, as you can see, with the district before, well-versed in all areas. She is actually a CPA officially, and she's elected to temporarily help us on a consulting basis. This will go probably till next month, and then we'll have a decision to make, but the contract and the agreement that we have provided you is very simple, and it can be terminated by either party within a seven-day notice, so we're recommending to go with it till we can agree to agree and move forward. We really have been blessed to do some catch-up work, and we're doing pretty good, pretty good. We recommend the approval.
All right. Well, we certainly do appreciate her stepping up during this difficult time for us. Thank you.
We have a motion, item nine?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item ten, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCC ISD.
As you can see, you have an attached, attachment there. Mr. Resio, if you want me to go over each one, or?
I went over all of them.
Yes, we do have the list, Mr. Resio, and I believe we can send them a thank you card.
Thank you.
Yes, and we do appreciate everything that our, all the donations that the district receives, but in the interest of time, we have a motion.
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. We have a second by Mr. Science. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on renewal of bond for safekeeping of government property, JR OTC, Rio Grande City High School and Gruya High School.
This is basically a renewal on the bond to ensure the equipment that we have that belongs to the military. We normally do this, it's a pretty much routine. We're asking recommendation for the approval to continue with the program.
We have a motion, item eleven?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Are any representatives here from the ROTC, JR ROTC, the principals from the schools here?
Yes.
Mr. Science? Well, just to congratulate the JR ROTC, the one from Rio Grande City High School, I believe this is the fourth year in a row that they get honor with distinction, honor unit with distinction, which is a very, the highest award that a high school unit can receive, and this year, I think it's the first time that Gruya participates, and they also receive the honor unit with distinction, so congratulations to both units.
Item twelve, consider and take possible action on budget amendment twenty sixteen dash three.
Basically, what this is, Mr. Resio, is an amendment from the Food Service Fund one oh one, and this is to follow the plan that they were provided by the USDA, and we're just following compliance. We're moving some money just to make sure that she has the money to support expenditures that are required, and some of those, was a bid for the vehicles, and some equipment that she has been purchasing and will continue to purchase as we go along.
We have a motion, item twelve?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of March twenty sixteen.
The month of March refunds totaled four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two and forty-two cents, as you can see, and we recommend approval.
Do we have any discussion, item thirteen?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on requisitions five thousand and over in a twelve-month aggregate. Thank you, Mr. Resio.
Thank you, Mr. Pres, excuse me, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, and ladies and gentlemen, we do have requisitions in the amount of five thousand and over in twelve-month aggregate for your consideration on pages one sixty-six and one sixty-seven. If you have any questions.
Just one question. On the first four items that you have there, it's from the American Surveillance Company?
Yes, sir.
They're doing work in the high schools and the academy, the A two C academy. Is it for work that was not done correctly, or was, they're repairing all these things, all these?
Yeah, these are repairs, you know, on the existing equipment.
I think they're, the American security, they're behind you, Mr. Smalley.
Okay, yeah. Would you like them to come up?
If they can.
Or to speak, please?
If you don't mind asking, but why are they? I know it's kind of a lot.
Thanks, Mr. President.
And the campuses. If you need to... Yes, sir.
Good evening, board members, members of the audience. What American Surveillance did for our district is they went out and they went into every single campus in our district to find out what was wrong with all our fire alarms throughout the school district. They found some issues, they found some major issues, and they went ahead and quoted us some price quotes. They are a part of the Region One Co-op, and they presented the price quotes to the district, and we feel that it is very important that we do get these repairs done immediately because of the safety of our children.
Board members, middle of last year, we were asked by the district to do an assessment of the status of the fire alarm systems throughout the district. We sent our crew, we visited every single campus, we found a lot of inconsistency, non-compliance with code, defective equipment. We forwarded our findings to Technology Department. We were asked to provide what are the most immediate needs, so we provided the first five schools that need to be taken care of. That's what we presented so far. We are part of the Region One Co-op, we have a contract with them, we provided you guys with price in compliance with that, with our contract. We noticed that the system haven't, none of the system have been maintained in years. There's no record of any kind of test, testing ever done on the system, there are no, basically there are no compliance, I don't know how else to put it without sounding alarming, they just, they just need to be looked at and worked on and brought out to compliance. They're not being monitored, if something should happen, nobody would know unless they're present. I don't know how to, how to put it in a way that it's not alarming, it just needs something to be, that needs to be done.
Including the new high school?
Real high school is not on the, on the list, it's only, and on the list only for inspections. It's working, has some minor issues, they have some troubles communicating, but it, every system needs to be inspected yearly, hasn't been done since it was installed. We don't know if the devices are detecting within parameters, we need to run a sensitivity test on it just to make sure that the system is detecting appropriately. It hasn't been done. It wasn't installed.
Hasn't been done at all?
Fire extinguishers have to be checked every single year, is that happening?
That's a different department, sir.
Right. On the fire extinguishers, the answer is yes.
It happens every year?
Yes. On the fire extinguishers, yes. On the fire alarms, the answer is no.
Wow. On the fire alarms, is the assessment still ongoing, or is it complete?
The assessment is complete for every, for eighteen campuses, but we understand that there are budget issues, so we were asked to give a, you know, something that needs to be fixed, although the first campuses that, that needed more attention, and that's what we, that's what we have.
Now, going back to that, Mr. Ramirez, there are a few campuses where the main control panel is not working, so once that unit is replaced and the system comes online, there might be other little issues that pop up, you know, smoke detector here, smoke sensor there, once the main system is up and running. So there might be little issues that come aboard once the system is running.
Got it, understood.
Any, any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Just asked us all four times, and I knew. Any more discussion, item fourteen? Do we have a motion, item fourteen?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids, RFP sixteen thirty-one, basic phone service, RFP sixteen thirty-one, I believe it was sixteen thirty-two?
Yes, yes. There is a revised packet in your package?
Yes, oh, yes. And internal connections?
Okay, going back to the first one, sixteen dash thirty-one, basic phone service, real quick lesson on this one, on E-Rate, the Schools and Libraries Division, it's gonna phase out the basic phone service eventually. This year, the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen year, we're getting seventy percent of our telephone bill back. We spend about a hundred and twenty, we average about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for the district, and out of that money, we're getting seventy percent back. RFP sixteen dash thirty-one, for the same amount, basically, we will be getting fifty percent back the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen year, and then eventually, every year, it's gonna go down twenty percent for the following year and twenty percent until it's completely phased out. E-Rate is doing away with complete basic phone reimbursements because they're gonna target other areas, so we have to take advantage while we have the chance. On that proposal, we went out for basic phone service, and we only received one proposal, and that was from Time Warner, which is our current provider, so I respectfully request that sixteen dash thirty-one be approved for Time Warner to be our basic phone service provider, unless there's any questions on this.
RFP sixteen dash thirty-two?
On RFP sixteen dash thirty-two, that's for internal connection. This is another component of E-Rate. On this component, E-Rate pays for eighty-five percent of it, and the district pays for fifteen percent of it. What we did is, we did an analyzation of the district, we analyzed all the components in our district, and we realized that our main router switch that we have at every campus, some of them haven't been replaced in ten, eleven years. So before we, this program will eventually also go away, but in the future years, we wanted to replace these switches routers this E-Rate period. We went out on RFP, and we did receive four responses to our RFP. Unfortunately, one was incomplete, so we stayed with three. We had a team of about four people that analyzed these proposals, myself, my partner in crime, Jerry Gonzalez, and two of my techs, and we analyzed item by item on these two, three proposals, and we came out with the following results, which are in your packet, and we are recommending the company NetSync to be our internal connections provider for E-Rate year nineteen. Any questions on this?
No, no, we have a number, sixteen dash thirty-three, Food Services Department vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We do have some vehicles for the Food Service Department for your, your consideration. The Food Service Department was needing a, or wanting a pickup, a supercab pickup, a midsize SUV, a compact car, and three vans for their department. So we have, we received bids from two different dealerships, we sent out bid packets to, to three of them, but we got two responses back. And our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis based on low bid.
We have a motion, item fifteen?
So move.
Can I ask for you to make a motion for each one?
Okay.
Thanks.
On item fifteen, do we have a motion on RFP sixteen dash thirty-one?
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, RFP sixteen dash thirty-two, internal connections, we have a motion?
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Si-
As presented, correct, the, the recommendation?
I'm sorry?
As presented. Yeah, as presented. The item as presented. If you want the one that he's recommending.
Yes. As presented.
As presented. We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen dash sixteen dash thirty-three, Food Services Department vehicles, do we have a motion?
I so move that we accept the recommendation as presented by the administration.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smalley.
Right. Thank you.
Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on stipends for masters and doctorates degrees.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo. On item sixteen, the district has an initiative where currently, we're paying five hundred dollars for master stipends and five hundred dollars for doctorate stipends. Initiative here is not only to retain our teachers with a master's degree, we also want to encourage them to pursue a master's degree. Just speaking to the curriculum department, it's about three thousand dollars per class for our dual enrollment, so as you can see, it'll pay itself off. Recommendation attached, as you can see, is a two thousand dollar stipend for math, science, reading, anything in language arts, and special ed. Yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, I know Mr. Science had a meeting with UTRGV that came down, Roma ISD was here, superintendent, and it was a good meeting, he had, good discussion also, so presented to you is a recommendation, but I know Mr. Science had some input on this.
Yes, we had a meeting with, her name is Dr. Manchaca from UTRGV, and she brought in two other gentlemen, two gentlemen with her. We also had Roma ISD and from our district was Dr. Trigo and Dr. Salinas and myself, and the idea was, we're trying to see if we can put together a program where we encourage instructional assistance to work on a bachelor's degree, bachelor's degree, and then teachers to work on masters, but we'd like for the masters to be in core areas, English, math, science, social studies, special ed, and bilingual ed, and provide the proper incentives for the teachers to want to do it. And the proposal that was presented here, to me, falls short of what I would like to see, and I would like to, we're gonna be continuing the meeting that we had with the members from the, our UTRGV and our local district and Roma. Dr. Manchaca contacted me this morning, and she would like to come up with, for us to meet again on the twenty-eighth of this month, and the idea is to bring, she's the dean of the College of Education at UTRGV, and she can only talk about master's degrees in education, which be mid-management and other things like that, but she's gonna bring on the twenty-eighth representatives from the, deans from the other departments, so that we can offer masters in math and science and English and social studies and maybe bilingual ed and special ed, and so we're gonna talk about what possible things, what possible options we have. Oh, we also had Dr. Montiel from STC, he has already some MOUs with A&amp;M Kingsville, and at the time, it was UT Brownsville, but now it's part of the UTRGV, that allows instructional assistance to work on a, an associate degree, and the MOU with these other institutions allows these people who have worked on the associate degree to continue to a bachelor's degree, and UTRGV, UT Brownsville, A&amp;M Kingsville will accept it and let them continue so that they can, on a path for their, for their bachelor's degree. And, and so we're trying to put all that together, so my suggestion is that we table this one and then come up with a more comprehensive program, and that might take a few more weeks to develop, because we're contacting different people, but I certainly would like to make it enticing enough for instructional assistance to want to get a bachelor's degree, and for teachers to want to get master's degrees in the core areas, and make it enticing enough so that they were really, this one says two thousand, I'd like to see it double that at least, you know, and, and so that we can get them, because I think the more education our people have, I think everybody benefits. I think everybody benefits. They benefit, the community benefit, the students benefit, everybody benefits. So it's a win-win situation and so at this.
If you don't mind, unless you have some questions, I'd like to move that we table it.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I have no issue with that. I, I would second it.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen is tabled. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on 2016 summer calendar.
Yes, sir. On item seventeen, historically, the district's gone into a four-day week. Your proposal on your pass out is a recommendation to begin June first through August eleventh. This is a four-day week, and as you see in the memo, these are the hours worked by the specific personnel groups. Administration does recommend approval. And as you can see, an hour of wellness also.
And that hour of wellness, it's for any employee, even if they're not presently doing summer school or working the
That's correct.
year. So if the teacher's off for summer, but they want to participate in the wellness, they can come in?
That's correct.
Okay, and it's gonna be like the Zumba classes and whatnot that we have?
Yes.
Perfect.
And, and the wellness part, that's, that's the next item?
That's the next.
Right.
It's not together with this one?
Right, that's correct. This is just a four-day weekend, the personnel groupings, their times.
We have a motion, item seventeen. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on district summer 2016 employee wellness program.
Yes, sir. On item eighteen, as we just mentioned, on the summer calendar. Item eighteen is a proposal for the summer wellness program, looking at, in your pass out, Zumba, yoga. There's walk off the pounds, walking, there's bicycling, there's even a basketball at, at Ramiro Vegas Gym. This is, this consists, proposal consists of four weeks in June, two weeks in July, and two weeks in August. We have sites in Rio, Rio Grande City High School, Gruia High School, and at the multipurpose center. Administration recommends approval.
I have a question on that one. On page one eighty-two, the summer hours is gonna be, for professionals, is gonna be till five-thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this says the wellness is gonna be from four to five. So if they go to the program, are they gonna be required to come back to campus from five to five-thirty? Or should we adjust the hour of the wellness program from, to four-thirty to five-thirty?
Yes. As I'm looking at the, on page one seventy-nine, like you mentioned, sir, it's a professional. It's from seven-thirty to five-thirty, and the schedule on the wellness is four to five, the thirty minutes. Usually what we did in the basketball, I know we went to the basketball, we'd stay till five-thirty, lock up the air, make sure everything was clean, and if not, report back to office, of course.
So all the, all the professional staff that participate in the wellness have to go back to campus?
Yes, I would recommend so, yes, sir. Till five-thirty. Or to stay behind and, and like we do at the gym, clean up and make sure everything's locked up in, in order. Or we can extend the, which would. Right. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, so I guess the easiest would be to adjust the
Four-thirty to five-thirty?
Yeah.
Now, the parents probably can do it because they get out at five.
We'll, we'll do that, sir.
And again, it's open to all employees, whether or not they're working during the, okay. And I was wondering, is there any way we could extend this, like throughout the school year? Is there interest in it? Could we do a survey to see if people are interested in continuing this during the
Sure.
During the regular school calendar year?
We had our staff visit La Jolla. They have a, a centralized wellness gym.
Yeah, my cousin, our cousin, well, my cousin runs that program and it's, she does phenomenal things with it.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's a good program.
Yeah.
It's obviously open throughout the day because you have staff that's off. You know, some personnel are off during the day, bus drivers, that kind of thing. So we did look at it. We did locate some equipment.
Awesome.
We, it was my call preferred to have two sites, east side and west side, before we opened anything.
Uh-huh.
I know La Jolla has one centralized, and you know how big La Jolla is, and that's working out okay. So maybe.
Maybe we could start with one centralized and then if it's more convenient, try to open one in the east. And, but I think, especially during like testing time and stuff, people need a way to maybe relieve their stress. If we could offer that, I think that would be great.
Yes.
We have a motion on item eighteen? We have a motion.
With the extension. With the caveat that it be corrected as previously spoken.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. We have a second? We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on district's instructional calendar for the 2016.
Yes, you're right. For the record, it is 2016-2017, just for the public also. Has a correction on the item, yes. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, yes, sir. Item nineteen, as you see on your pass out, this is the instructional calendar. As you know, the state passed the new law where there's no longer days, now it's minutes. So the states requiring seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes minimum, or a four hundred and twenty day, four hundred and twenty minute per day instruction. As you see our proposal, there was two calendars that were created, and there's many components, which I'll talk about in a minute. Our proposal is, it was calendar one and two, which is a total of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty minutes, which goes above the minimum requirement. Semester one is broken up in thirty-five thousand one hundred minutes. Semester two is forty, forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty minutes. Inside the calendar, you have seven professional learning days, three work days, and two time equivalency program days, which is, that'll come in up, and I believe in the next item. It was clear from the teacher feedback, from curriculum department, from everybody involved, different committees we had, that the half-days were not very efficient for several reasons. One, our attendance was down on those days. I believe the feedback from our educators also was that these half-days, so those are out.
Hard to take care of their kids, those good kids and stuff. They complained about it, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that, that's out.
Awesome.
Another component in the calendar, as you see, is the TEP time equivalency program. You see those in the beginning of November, twenty-first, twenty-second. And just the results here, I know I have them here somewhere. It's eighty-two percent came back for calendar one, which is a total of six hundred and seventy-seven votes, opposed to the eighteen percent, one hundred and fifty-one votes. So calendar one is our recommendation.
Is that the one with the Super Bowl Monday off?
Yes. I already checked. I think that was very attractive. We're rejoining Roma now with the Super Bowl Monday off. But, but also, I think that was very attractive is that they have one full week for Thanksgiving. The Thanksgiving week, all of it is off, the whole week.
That is correct.
A lot of schools are already doing that, so that's good.
That is our recommendation, calendar one.
Do we have a
I move to approve it as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on 2016-2017 employee working calendar days.
Thank you, sir. Now we have instructional calendar, and as an effect of that, we have working days. So as you see in your pass out, you have working calendars for individuals of two thirty-two, all the way down to one eighty. Those are just samples of each one. Staff recommends approval. This to standardize the calendars for individuals in those groupings. Two thirty-two days all the way down to one, one eighty.
We have a motion, item twenty?
I'll move.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on 2016-2017 time equivalency program guideline.
Yes, sir. As our instructional calendar was, was passed, option one had November twenty-first and twenty-second as time equivalency program. These are the guidelines that will be used to, to guide our time equivalency program. What it is, in a nutshell, is twelve hours of staff development equals two days, which will be given in November, November twenty-first and twenty-second. And it gives you all the guidelines on what's accepted and what's not accepted. These are guided by supervisors. We look for a needs assessment. I know we've heard Mr. Sines mention about the district improvement, the campus improvement plan guiding you on, you know, and some, some teachers might have recommendations from administration. So the big, big changes here that we're recommending in this, you know, there were, Mr. Peña and his staff, you know, did a great job working with, with our HR staff. The big threshold that I see here is a recommendation on the TEP guidelines is now employees will have till December sixteenth to finish and comply with these TEP hours, which are twelve. This is opposed to what we did this year, since it was the first year that we worked on this. They have till April twenty-eighth, which is a couple of weeks or next week. So this is the big change from, from last year. And of course, it was well thought out. We, we learned from, from the first year. I, I do also recommend that we go with these guidelines. These were also presented to our legal, local legal, and were looked at and revised.
And part of the training that's gonna be provided for teachers will count towards TEP days. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. As long as it's with a non-calender date.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. That's correct. So administration recommends approval.
We have a motion, item twenty-one? We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salinas. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action, our request for permission to advertise for nine instructional strategists for the 2016-2017 school year.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. The curriculum department comes before you to request and seeks approval to improve, in order to improve the state assessments throughout the district and to facilitate with the campuses and provide them with instructional strategists to enhance the performance of all students, especially throughout the district, bilingual, migrant, special education, and all student populations. We believe that through the instructional strategists, we will provide appropriate staff development. They will be able to facilitate this at each campus. Conduct professional learning community meetings as we move into that, starting this summer. Model research-based instructional strategies and other assigned duties. This is, you know, the first time we're coming before you, and we are, we do have approval through the different grants that we have within the district. If we have permission tonight, we will include them in our grants come June. And if they are approved by TEA, then we will go ahead and advertise at that time.
Do we already have a job description for this position?
Yes, sir. We have several samples that we'll be bringing before you next meeting.
I know that Eddie and I got to sit and talk with Mr. Peña, or Dr. Peña, Mr. Peña a little bit about that. It was, we're really excited to hear what you all are, are working on, and I think that it'll be an invaluable asset for our district. Very pleased. Thank you so much.
And the monies are available for them?
Well, we are gonna, once we get permission today, sir, we will embed them in our grants. We have through bilingual education, special ed education, migrant education, and the rural grants. So we will request them in the grants come June. Once we get approval early July, then we can go ahead and, and secure.
Mr. Peña, but you left out the most important one, as far as I'm concerned, in the math. You not included the math there?
Yes, sir. At this time, we've only secured funding for these through the grants, but we hope to continue, you know, to expand. One reason, sir, on mathematics, we, as a district, we've been able to acquire professional development from experts that have curriculums already. So as we met and discussed through the curriculum department, Mr. Trigo, you know, that was the, that we already purchased a curriculum that's aligned by consultants. So we felt if there's an area that we need to maybe wait a little, would be this one, sir, for that reason.
But in mathematics, it's one of the areas where we've been scoring kind of low, isn't it, I mean?
Yes, well, based on the, it's more readings. And the reading, math are a little higher. And once we get the scores, you know, remember that this past year was the first time we viewed Sharon Wells at the elementary, and we hope to see those gains throughout, because we've been consistent with it.
I think some scores were released today, maybe. I think some tests came out today and we may be able to see some fruition there.
Mr. Peña, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, my understanding is that you wanna open this within the district for those that would apply.
Once we get TA to approve those grants, we'll be coming, you know, and, well, it's within and outside the district, both, sir.
And there's a committee that's gonna be
Yes, sir. There's an instructional committee from our department that will be interviewing for the positions.
Do you have, like, what are they, gonna be the qualifications or criteria for the people?
You, HR, we're working together, sir, and we'll provide that at the next meeting.
And that includes the salary, that's right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I think we had talked about also looking from, not only within, but also outside of the district to see the best qualified.
Right.
If we needed it.
No, I was just gonna ask if there's any more discussion?
Well, no, like, are they gonna be under, not all of them, but under one person, but under the different departments? Is that correct?
Different departments, sir, but under the curriculum.
I'm sorry?
They're under the curriculum department.
Okay, but the supervisors for migrants will be under migrants and
Yes.
for the special ed and for all the departments? Is it a grant, long-term, or is it, are we thinking of doing this long?
These grants have been here for a long time.
So you can
Yes, sir. As long as they don't change some of the specifications on the grants.
I hate to implement it and then be like cut off all of a sudden. Thank you, Mr. Peña.
Any more discussion? We have a motion on item twenty-two?
I saw a move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on Region One Elementary Reading Staff Development.
Yes, sir. Here, as we continue to analyze the data of the different campuses and identify the needs throughout the district, you know, we do see that our language arts area still, we need to align and focus on it. So what we've done already in the middle school earlier in this year, you approved for middle school language arts teachers to go through this. What Region One does is they come in, they look at our scope and sequence, and they help us identify, you know, our gaps in, in the curriculum, and then they help us with the deconstruction of the SEs. So we plan to now bring it down. This is only, you know, kinder through fifth grade. We're gonna do kinder through second, first, and it's three days. And then we'll work with the third through fifth, after the testing in May, work with third through fifth grade. And we do have funding available for this. It's through SCE and Title I, and we recommend approvals.
Do we have a motion on item twenty-three?
I move to approve it as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis on item twenty-three. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on three-day science staff development for grades six through eight by Dr. Karen Jacobs Consulting.
Yes, sir. Here, we're coming before you once again, as we've analyzed throughout the different subject areas and needs. At the middle school, we have a need where our teachers need staff development. In the area of science, the scores reflect that. So we are recommending that we acquire the services of Dr. Karen Jacobs from Houston. And we do have funding. It is available through SCE. We recommend approval.
Any discussion on item twenty-four? We have a motion on item twenty-four? We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action. Thank you, Mr. Peña. Possible action on professional services and site license agreement between RGCC ISD and Sharon Wells Mathematical Curriculum Incorporated for the 2016-2017 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, and ladies and gentlemen. The curriculum department is recommending approval to renew the Sharon Wells curriculum license for mathematics at the elementary level for the 2016-2017 school year. The cost is forty-five thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars, and funding will be available through funds two seventy and two fifty-five. We are recommending approval.
Have we had, have we had any evaluation of what we've done this year, how effective and
Yes, sir. After, after every training, the grade levels that are being trained are second, third, fourth, and fifth. And after every training, we do give out evaluations and we do read them, and we do listen to the teachers. And actually, this year, they're requesting maybe like full-day trainings, and it's not that much more. So we are asking for, or recommending approval for this, and that's already included in that, that amount. But yes, the teachers feel a lot more confident and they feel that
They like the program?
They really like the program. It's very structured.
We have a motion on item twenty-five. We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action, our request to provide instructional materials all RGCC ISD pre-K students for the 2016-2017 school year.
Yes, sir. Again, the curriculum department is recommending approval to offer pre-kinders students in our district instructional materials to start off the school year. All pre-kindergarten students will be better prepared for instruction and will assist, and this will assist parents with the cost of school supplies, especially if they have other children that they have to buy school supplies for. The cost is approximately eight thousand dollars, and funds will be available through funds two fifty-five and two seventy. And we respectfully recommend your approval.
In this one, it's, you know, if you go to Walmart, particularly Walmart, right before school starts, they have all these lists of items for the, for the parents to buy for their kids. What this is gonna do, hopefully, right, is to replace, to have pre-K and K students not have to, the parents not have to buy all this stuff?
It's for pre-kinders.
Pre-kinders only?
Yes, sir. And they, we will supply those school supplies for them.
School supplies? You have already School supplies? You have already determined what's needed and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's your basics, the crayons, the paper, the glue, the bottles of glue, the glue sticks. And we had asked pre-kinders teachers in the past what it is that they mostly need in the classroom.
All right, so each teacher is gonna be given a container with all that?
What they'll do after we, of course, it'll go out on bid, and the lowest, the lowest, or, yeah, the lowest bids will get our business, I guess. And what we will do instead of, because one year, we brought all the supplies to the school district, to the main cafeteria.
For voucher.
And we had to separate them by schools, and there was, for those of us that worked, it was like really hard, you know, very heavy boxes. So what they're doing for us now, we will request for the supplies to be sent to each of the schools. According to, you know, the number of students that they will have. And we always had extras, just in case, like the migrant students coming in late, we had those supplies for them. The principals just need to request that.
It's great, and like you said, it alleviates for the parents who have children in other grades, at least they don't have to worry about the pre-K, so it's-
And kids feel better when they have all the supplies.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Will we approve item twenty-six, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Min. Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment, enrollment course agreement with STC Summer 2016.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Hoel Trigo, Superintendent of Schools, Board members, community members. Rio Grande City High School, and of course, Rio Grande City, Gruia High School, and the Preparatory for Early College have submitted the dual enrollment courses that we would like to offer this summer for the 2016, and also the academies, if applicable, if we have students that are still enrolling to academy, we're also requesting approval for those. The Preparatory for Early College is requesting computer science, speech, and Texas government. Rio Grande City High School is requesting computer science and speech, and Gruia High School is requesting speech and psychology. And of course, if there's any other course that we would, that we have an enrollment of fifteen students or more that are interested, we will also recommend those courses. There is no cost to the students who attend the Early College High School. The students who attend Rio High School and Gruia High School will pay sixty-five dollars per course, per section, per semester. So it's sixty-five dollars for them. The district requests approval for these courses.
Any discussion?
How's the enrollment, like, in the past? Been pretty good?
Yes, sir. We usually have sections of twenty-five or more students, and we do have to have at least fifteen in each section. So that's why we, we go ahead and give you an approximate cost of, it's usually three thousand dollars per section. But yes, our enrollments, we have the kids sign up, and then from there, we request the sections from South Texas College.
We have a motion, an item twenty-seven.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on instructional material allotment antique certification for the 2016-2017 school year.
This one, the district superintendent, along with the board president and the secretary of the local board of trustees, must certify that the instructional materials allotment antique certification document for the 2016-17 school year is read and signed, and the document is attached. And basically, this will certify that the district's instructional materials allotment is used for only expenses that are allowed by the Texas Education Code 31.0211, and that for the current school year, this district has instructional materials that collectively cover all elements of the Texas Essential Knowledges and Skills of their required curriculum identified in TEC 28.002, and that upon request, the district will provide to the State Board of Education the title and publication information for any instructional materials requisitioned or purchased by the districts with the, with the district's IME money. So again, we did check with, we are in compliance. We do follow the guidelines, so we are requesting again just for the signatures.
Any discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Science.
Second.
Do we have a second by Ms. Solis? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, thank you, Dr. Trigo. Item twenty-nine, consider and take possible action on South Texas Vocational Institute Course and Program offerings for Gruia High School.
We come before you once again, sir, for the Career Technology Education Program at Gruia High School. We are requesting to continue to offer the services for nursing health science classes, and this includes a CNA and phlebotomy. We do have funding, and we request approval.
I have a question. I've seen this before, and I've always had this question. Do we offer the same program in Rio Grande?
We do have teachers that offer these courses, miss, so we offer, it might be different certificates. Phlebotomy, we have in the past, but not this year. But we do offer pharmacy tech and medical billing.
Oh, okay.
So, and we have the teachers on staff.
Oh, okay. I see.
And since Gruia doesn't have the staff, we offer this other program.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Penny, this is a, there's no dates?
It's this semester, sir.
Just for this semester?
It's going on.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-nine?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirty, consider and take possible action on request from CTE Department to purchase computers for one position manufacturing CTE classroom.
Yes, sir. Since STC is moving on to a new curriculum or new software platform, these computers are pretty old, and they cannot operate in the system. So they do have funding, and Career Technology Education will be funding it. So they are computers.
What camps is it gonna be?
Rio Grande City High School, sir.
And just when is needed?
Like, for entire classroom or just?
For the classroom, sir. It's twelve computers.
Oh, okay. One per classroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's one classroom, but it's twelve for that classroom.
We have a motion, item thirty?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirty-one, consider and take possible action on Special Education Summer 2016 Curriculum Writing Project.
Good evening, Board President again, and Mr. Hoel Trigo, and board members and community. Here we have a proposal from the Special Education Department for the Curriculum Writing Project. As we came to the board last month, we asked, or we requested approval for the regular core curriculum project that we were gonna have this summer. What this is, that we are, we are recommending that we fund teachers from the Special Education Department. We're looking at eleven elementary teachers, eight secondary teachers, for a total of nineteen teachers to assist with the regular curriculum. So these teachers are teachers who teach special education. They will be working and collaborating side by side with the regular ed teacher during the summer curriculum project. So this is something that we're requesting. We do have the funding through Title I and SCE. It's a total of sixty-two thousand dollars, and we recommend approval.
Can I suggest something? On page two forty, where you have the listing, there's some, some of those numbers are not accurate.
Okay.
And the bottom line, the very last one, sixty-two thousand, that is correct, once the adjustment is made, but a couple of the numbers there are not correct, just so be careful with that.
Yes, sir. We will go back and we will look at those numbers.
Okay.
We have a motion on item thirty-one.
Will we approve item thirty-one as presented?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Say it.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirty-two, consider and take possible action on RGCCISD State Bilingual Department Logo.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, Superintendent of Schools, and audience present. The bilingual department is seeking to create a logo for our department. This will be done by allowing our students to participate in this, in this project. We wanna give the opportunity to each school to submit our contest, this art contest, and we will select one winner. And with your permission, we would, that would be the logo. That would represent our bilingual department. As I've been looking at other districts and their webpages, they do have their district logo, but they also have a state bilingual department logo. And I consider this to be a great opportunity for our students to be part of this new process in the bilingual department. We have, we haven't had a bilingual webpage, and so that's one of our projects. By the end of this summer, we wanna have that complete.
Awesome.
So we recommend approval.
And when's the deadline to enter?
I didn't put a deadline, because with your, if we get approval this afternoon, it will go out tomorrow to the campuses, and they will probably give them about two weeks for the students to work on this project, and then we will have a committee to select the winner. And the winner will receive a prize.
Yeah, I saw an iPad.
Yes, that would be an iPad. So the bilingual department respectfully requests approval for this item.
I see a move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Item thirty-three, consider and take possible action on a three-year dual-language program implementation agreement between RGCCISD and Gomez and Gomez Dual Language Consultants.
Yes, Mr. Board President, on this item, we do have a correction. Instead of a three-year dual-language agreement, it would be a one-year. Right now, we are recommending for a one-year approval. And the dual-language model, we wanna go with the Gomez and Gomez. This program has been implemented throughout many districts here in the state of Texas and outside of state of Texas. It's been very, very successful, and as we look at restructuring the bilingual program, we do see the need for a native language, our, our students to benefit from, from a program like this. They would be targeted, of course, in their native language as they progress in learning a second language. And research has shown that as they move up in the grade, in the years, as they progress throughout the years, they actually outnumber. By the time they become fifth graders, they do outnumber the students that are not in a dual-language program. So, so we, the bilingual department recommends approval for this, for this implementation for next year. And we will start, Phase One will include only pre-K and kinder, and that would be for next year.
And so what, how does it impact the cost? Do you have different things there?
Yes, sir. As, as I was discussing this with Dr. Gomez, and we did form a task force committee for this. For year one implementation, it would be forty-one thousand dollars. We do have funding through Title III, and he would be training all the pre-K and kinder teachers. And that includes, in those forty-one thousand dollars, that includes also training throughout the year. He would come with his consultants. He would be doing classroom observations, and he would be recommending different procedures for us to implement the program properly and to see that we get the success that this program has. And, yes, sir.
If we go into this for year one, are we then required to go to year two and then year three?
Well, in order for this program, sir, to have a complete success, yes, we, we, it progresses. The students that eventually go through the dual language, they move up, they move up throughout the years. It is, the dual language is actually, to show complete success, is five years, which will go all the way to the end of elementary. And for year two, of course, it would be only the first-grade teachers who would have to be trained, and the cost for that would be twenty-two thousand. But of course, we would present that at the end of the following year, the following school year.
What is here is up to six years of training.
Because, since pre-K, sir, from pre-K all the way, six years, it would be the end of fifth grade. And we do have Dr. Gomez tonight here, present with us. So, Dr. Richard Gomez, I don't know if you wanna just stand. He is here. If you have any questions additionally for him.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Gomez, sir?
And you said the money's available for this first year?
Yes, yes, sir. We do have money available through bilingual Title III, yes, sir.
Okay, and then like, we're not assured that we're gonna have it for the next year, are we, the money?
No, sir. We do have the money. It would be available.
For the following year?
Even for the following year, yes, sir. For 2016-2017, the forty-one thousand dollars that it requires with full training and implementation, we do have the money available.
Okay, for that one, and then if we need to go for the second year?
We do have the money, sir, and for the following year, we would have the money. That is through Title III. That is a grant that is renewed every year.
But today, what you're asking us to approve would be a one-year contract.
A one-year.
Forty-one thousand dollars, including training, travel, and whatnot.
Yes.
And then we'll get feedback, surveys, and the next year, if we renew, there's monies available for next year as well, which would be twenty-two thousand dollars to move on to the next level.
That is correct.
All right, and you said that other, other districts within the state have been using it?
Yes. As a matter of fact, here in the valley, from Zapata all the way to Brownsville, there's only basically two districts that don't have it in place. That's Ro'aminos. Yes. Everybody else has had it. As I visited PSJA ISD, they have had it for twenty years. They're actually the only district right now in the valley that has graduated seniors through the dual-language program. And as they went on to middle school and high school, they, they asked the state for the bilinguacy seal to have on their diplomas when they graduate. And so that would be great as we, if this program is successful here in our district, and as we progress, to eventually have that for our district. So the bilingual department respectfully requests approval for the dual-language program for next year.
And I have one more thing to Mr. Trigo. We have not gotten a report from TEA about their visit, have we?
Not yet, sir. The formal report has not come in yet.
Okay, and that's gonna require that we address certain issues, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Are we not getting ahead of ourselves, so should we kinda wait till we know exactly what TEA is gonna request of us for the bilingual program before we?
No, we know for certain that we have to implement and adopt the bilingual model. The preliminary recommendation is that we have to have a bilingual program in place that is systemic.
This is one what you're?
And this one that we are recommending for approval this evening is one that meets the requirements of what's the state bilingual program requires for districts to do.
For, and, Mr. Science, for those students or those parents that do not want their kids through the dual language, and this is, of course, pre-K, they're, they're coming into the district, so the qualifications from the state for pre-K, they have to be, they don't know English, so they automatically qualify for the dual language. But for our pre-Ks going into kinder, if the parents choose not to have them in the dual language, and they are bilingual students, we have the bilingual program, okay, which, which is in place and has been in place, but it has not been implemented properly. And so that's what we are changing for next school year.
And that was one of the preliminary recommendations, that we have to take a close look at.
Because you were given like a verbal summary, right?
A verbal.
Even though it's not yet been subscribed in writing, you were told, I think, specific things need to go through.
I think we'd stick to that.
Yes, please.
The item, just so that you can stick to that item. On just this program, and then if we wanted to add that to-
I know, but if it applies to possible, for-
Because the decision that you're making, you're asking questions.
Right, that's the only reason.
That's the reason they're asking questions, is to make an informed decision, though.
Just so we're not getting ahead of ourselves, and then TEA tells us, this is what you need to address, and it doesn't have to do with this. I just didn't wanna get ahead. Are we all right?
Yeah, it's fine.
We have a motion on item thirty-three?
I move that we approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second by Mr. Gonzalez? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirty-four, consider and take possible action on a three-year purchase agreement contract between RGCCISD and Image Learning.
Yes, Mr. Board President. Imagine Learning is an award-winning language and literacy software company that features interactive activities, videos, and games. It provides data that teachers can use to get, gain an insight into what is going on with each individual student, what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, and how they can help them move forward. Imagine Learning offers complete literacy instruction for all students in primary grades and intervention for all elementary students. It goes from pre-K all the way to sixth grade. And they also have a Spanish component that goes all the way from pre-K to second grade at this time. And they build, it's based on key concepts and skills, and we are recommending approval for this program. For your information, two hundred and fourteen state, districts in the state are using this program. Their renewal rate is ninety-five percent. And districts here within our area that are currently using it and have been renewing throughout the years with them, we have La Joya. We also have Sherinland. We have San Benito, Macala, and Zapata. And I know that as I've been conversing with the representatives from the company, and they have come, and they have done several presentations for our central office staff, our school, elementary principals, as well as our bilingual task force committees, which includes the pre-K and kinder teachers, lead teachers. They, they have been impressed with what this company is providing or offering for us, and with the implementation of the dual language. For some reason, it's just a coincidence that most of the districts throughout the state that are using the dual language, they also have Imagine Learning. They're not partnering, partnering with Imagine Learning, but it is a company that is successful with the dual-language implementation because of the fact that they have both components, the English and the Spanish. We also have representation from the company this, tonight with us. We have Mr. Jesse Sanchez, if you have any questions. have Mr. Jesse Sanchez, if you have any questions, and, um, so...
The total package is over a million dollars, isn't it?
And, uh, that is correct, sir, that is on a three-year, uh, on a three-year contract. Um, one, uh, one year, uh, was, uh, half a million, and by going with a three-year contract, we got a, a fifty percent discount, plus an additional discount, and the company also offered to help us in the summer, uh, if approved, uh, they would come and allow it, allow us to use the program, uh, with our summer school program.
I hesitate entering into a three-year contract. I don't know if that's prudent, um, just because that ties up...
I know, and, and, again, uh, excuse me for interrupting, uh, the uncertainly, uncertainty of the report, because we have not gotten it, I don't know if I want to make a three-year commitment of a million dollars, a million eighty thousand, um, and we still don't know what T E A is going to tell us about, um, our program, you know, and, and I, I'm just a little bit uneasy with, with...
Yes.
The amount, and of course, because we don't have the report from T E A.
I hesitate three years.
Yes, and, uh, just for your information, even if, you know, if, if, T A, you know, comes in, uh, with their findings, that, this company, the program that it offers, it would help all our bilingual students and our ESL students also in the middle schools, as well as the recent immigrants, because, uh, even though it's, uh, goes all the way to sixth grade, uh, by purchasing, if, if approved, by purchasing, uh, all the elementaries, automatically middle schools and high schools will get access, all the students, uh, and, uh, the recent immigrants, uh, when they come in from Mexico, uh, obviously, they don't know the English language, so this program would help them, uh, achieve the language as they move forward. And we do have, um, uh, funding, um, through, uh, Title One, and also through Title Three Bilingual, and, and S E as well, so, those will be the three sources that we would utilize for this fund.
What if T A tells us that we need to do it right, uh, and to return money? That we're in a bind, we have this program and have to return money? I mean, I'm not saying that that's what they're going to do, but that's a...
Is there any way they could option us, like, a one-year with a renewal, or anything that we could table and consider?
Because we did, we did, uh, talk to them, and, uh, I know when it was mentioned, and we did review the three-year, I know, uh, uh, Board President had a question on the three-year when we were working on the agenda.
Oh, you did, I wasn't there for that, I'm not...
And, uh, we did call, uh, the curriculum department, and you all did call to confirm that the price is substantially lower if we do go into a three-year commitment as opposed to a one. Now, at this point in time, uh, there are some good points being brought up by the board, uh, Mr. Martinez and Mr. Penya, and the curriculum department, at this time, perhaps we could, uh, we could revisit this and table it at this time, if that's the wish of the board, and we could research it a bit more, have more solid data regarding the schools and districts that are implementing this program, and perhaps some, some better, more concrete data regarding the success rate of the students in districts that are using this. How about we do that, would that be better, Mr. Science and members of the board?
Well, what, yeah, I, I think I, I would go for that, although it says here that we have a deadline of tomorrow to agree to this plan, otherwise it would not, no longer be effective.
That is correct, sir. And that is because they do have, uh, to give us the, the percentage of discount, uh, they, they, they gave us that deadline.
Discount being ten percent?
Ten percent.
Ten percent is the discount?
The, the, it's fifty percent, sir.
Fifteen?
Fifty, five-zero.
Fifty percent, that's why...
Plus an additional, plus an additional ten percent.
Oh, no, okay, additional ten percent.
Yes.
That's when we presented it to, mentioned it to our Board President at that point in time, and of course, it was going to be brought up, uh, this evening for discussion to see how you all felt, because of the cost, being that it is proven to be a very effective program, we felt, okay, well, our district, uh, have the benefit at the same time with the cost savings that, that we discussed, but, uh, Mr. Martinez, do you feel there's a way that the vendor, or the person that you're dealing with, will give us an extension? Our board needs a little more time, and we need to provide more concrete evidence research, and I would recommend that from the curriculum department, that we provide, just because the amount is, is quite, quite a large amount, and the decision here that the board does make is one that we're committing our district money to it, and also, I can see why the board is, is, at this time, uh, having questions and a little hesitant regarding the approval of this, so, if we could do that, Mr. Martinez, I feel that we would be in a better, uh, position to, to, or a better position to present to the board to have an informed decision that's made in the best interest of our students.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion on item, item thirty-four?
To table?
I move that we table it.
I would second that.
There's a motion to table, uh, there's a second by Ms. Solis, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion, uh, table carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything on reports? Where it is now, eight oh five, we're in closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five, one point oh-seven-one.
Are we gonna skip the reports?
Oh, no, I called it, they said nothing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It is now, now, nine oh eight, we're out of executive session.
Do we have a motion on item A?
I move that we approve item A as presented in executive session.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B, do we have a motion, item B?
I move that we approve this item as presented in executive session.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Aye.
We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion, item C?
I move that we approve item C as discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Solis? And we have a second by Mr. Science, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D?
I move that we approve item D as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion on item D by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E?
I move that we approve item, I thought we did D, no?
No, E.
Yeah, we're on E. Uh, item E as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis on item E, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Science, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.